You all any better?
Not really. I've got a lip problem. Actually, it's hard to hear anything else.
Have you done your food lately?
No, really bad sinus infection. I was just... Yeah, sort of. I was very anxious when the snows all gone.
Is it just on there?
Yeah. The pollen's going in, the pollen's going out. Sure. It's not bad.
Sounds like a real good time to look forward to this.
What is?
I was talking about this thing.
I guess we're gonna do some...
So it's all around the house.
All right.
Are you all sure, right? You want to learn what your wishes?
Right.
Oh, more than that. Okay, approval of the agenda. So... What for? Do you have a thing? I think I can answer and we can... Do you want to put it down in the phone plus thing?
Yeah.
There's seriously probably not one of them running out. But alright, that's good. Alright, somebody want to approve the agenda if you don't want? What, say, Jared? Senator? Ross? All in favor? Okay, adoption approved the minutes of the March 24th, 25th meeting? If you folks have those.
I have a couple of questions. Should I wait till they're approved or...?
Yeah, let's see, I'll put a question in. Alright, somebody want to make a motion to approve? What do you think? Senator? Chris? Questions?
I just have a question. Under number six, the adopted card, septic and land use agreement. Has there been any information back from the minister or anybody about that?
Yes, and Susie's got to do a little bit further research on some of the... The art media office and she's got to do some research. And then we're about to be on the agenda for Monday morning.
Speaking real quickly on that, they need to go back a little further in their history books and I don't know if they kept the information, but they should have. This goes back, throwback to last hollow, if you're given later.
Just talking about it, yeah.
Okay.
Or even, yeah. And again, that's some of the stuff that I don't... Susie's gonna be able to get any information from the statistics, I think you want it on... We have the same.
Yeah, there's so much.
Okay, and that, I mean, you talked about that way back on September the 23rd, 2024. And again, at our October 28th meeting. And it was something we knew we need to have done. I'm just wondering, how many times did they contact DTI over that period of time? Like, how many, how many times were they contacted and followed up with?
I said, I contacted once with that letter. Over in November, whatever that letter you sent up. And the response came back from these guys, so...
The application already... Yeah, and they had to do an application for a land use agreement. And then there was a follow-up of that. And then it was last month or the month before when I got the certified letter from, from them denying it. And then I had a follow-up and then Richard Ames followed up. And I keep, Richard Ames, I sent a message today at 1:00 o'clock, so that's why it'll be on next.
And the original letter wrote to Richard Ames as well, I believe, did it not?
I understand.
So, so we, we did no other follow-up then? From October, September, October 2024? Well, I think we should have been following up on that, like, weekly or every other week?
I think we were waiting for the response back from government. The ball would have been in their hands, would it not? To have responded to us. And it took government that long to respond.
Well, when government doesn't respond, sometimes we have to kind of... Be following up so we've got a paper trail. And the other thing is, have, has any letter been sent to the new Minister Chak Chak Sheshon? Or the new Deputy Minister Kelly Kane? Have we sent anything to them yet?
We have not, well, again, I'll speak for this. We have not sent anything to them because we were waiting for the response back from the Department of Transportation. So there can be follow-up to go to that, uh, Sheshon, that's...
He's the new Minister of Transportation for the new government.
Well, that's where that letter would have gone. He said it would have gone to his department.
And that was sent when?
In the middle.
I don't have it listed because we aren't going to talk about it tonight, so...
Anyway, we can have some more information on...
Okay, I would love to see more information Monday night, not many times. We did follow-up, who we followed up with.
Well, we did follow-up, but we put in an application and they had said it was going to be several months before they respond. And so it wasn't until I got the letter of response that then Richard Ames got involved and then that was called the office.
Okay, well, we're now into April, as you know. The park's gonna want to get open here, we gotta get some work done on this, so I, I just... Anyway, we've got, we gotta get on top of it. And the other, or just one more. And the other thing is, um, the very end of that meeting, I asked about the auditor. And I'd like to know, do we know that we want an auditor yet?
We're going to discuss that in the closed session.
Okay. Thank you.
Ready? You have, you saying you have, did you need someone to follow up?
No, I just, I've got somebody else to follow up on that too.
Okay.
Due to the fact that it was granted to us back in the seventies. Uh, and they never changed it, then changed the title, so this really comes on them.
Is this someone from the grave?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Pretty much.
Comments? Can we have a motion then to approve those, uh, the arrangements?
They already got motion.
Yeah.
Oh, no, the question, all in favor?
Alright.
We'll publish the results tonight. Okay, set the dates for the energy meets for this strategic plan, so you can come in here to recognize everything.
She just needs a few hours to get, so she can have a meeting with council to get what you want from it and what direction you want her to take. And so she's proposed, she knew we didn't have time for four hours. Sorry, my mom. Oh, so she, um, proposed Saturday, May 3rd, from 9:00 until noon.
No, I wouldn't be interested in a Saturday at night.
Yeah, let's see, Steve?
You guys commit to a night session, why would you say that?
I do a night session, but I'm not in...
Three, she tried to say three, four hours, so...
Would you guys be interested in a night session, say, what time can you guys be here?
When I get here, I can tell you right now, it's crazy here. I know, I have some life span I can...
Alright. Night session then? Okay, ask them for a get a couple of dates on your night sessions as you...
Okay.
And if we have to stay like 7:00 or 10:00 or something, I think...
I don't, definitely 5:00 or 6:00.
So, can you...
Oh, I get here when I get here.
And, yeah, she could be 12, 13, 14. So is anybody have any time in May if they're just not available?
No.
Okay, then. Saturday, you got that, the live on evenings, any time in May when we need...
Oh, I said, I can do an evening if this...
Okay.
Anything from the 13th of May till the 16th? You won't see me anywhere around, I'm gonna be in hell back, so I'm cautious.
I'm, I'm open to us. Jared, from, hi, you two ladies?
I've got some things, but I'm, you know, I try to change them, but...
If we could get a couple of days and then, um... Alright, second and third, we need to conduct, I have to recognize just the highlights.
You can do it by some time, because it's still on my website, sometimes.
Alright. Okay, bylaw number 2.2, Code of Conduct, bylaws in the council against helping Lake Glen Ridge in, uh, part one, Code of Conduct values. Honesty, integrity, objectivity, impartiality, and accountability. Conflict of interest, um, that would examine the behavior. Use of property, resource and services, public communications, applicable laws. Uh, part two, complaints, uh, those are various things filed and complained, the initial review. Initial review by council. Uh, investigation by consultant, if needed, against investigation by council, annual report. Part three, counter, part four, corrective actions. And part five, effective date and repeal. And then declaration of familiarity, all of these provisions. I didn't conduct the complaint, G3, or actual design. Alright, third reading, bylaw number 23, Code of Conduct by law to the council municipality of Lake Glen Ridge. Part one, Code of Conduct, we're talking about honesty, integrity, objectivity, impartiality, and accountability. Conflict of interest, dangers. Use of property, resources and services, public communication, applicable laws. Then we're giving a complaint section, filing complaint, the initial review, initial review by council. Investigation by consultants, investigation by council, the actual report. Yeah, council decisions, corrective actions, if needed, and effective date and repeal. And then the declaration of familiarity with the conflict of interest provisions, which is essentially the initial complaint. I think the vote is for to adopt, bylaw number 2.2, the Code of Conduct, the council... There, we have the motion. So, I'm writing, I'm writing as a second. Questions? All in favor? Okay, email from Mr. Richard Ames and it's, uh, it pertains to, uh, he said a comment. And that's the one we wanted. Now, you want to just read. He's entered email as official correspondence to the red council. Number one, at the bottom of the email, our comments received from the executive director of operations at the Department of Transportation for the various student question deputy mayor stairs who have line paid in word one. Uh, as stated above, the road in question does not make the traffic count to warrant striping. The three will constrain this year in our striping budget and are currently in the process of heat built programming for our roads that do meet the traffic pattern. It is high again likely, we can add the stroke to the program. I'm happy to revisit this request later, and it seems enough cost certainly from the program and clear. However, at this time, we cannot commit to this work. Uh, did you ask him about this year's law or last year? I asked him last year, and I asked him this year. Uh, available, so he's on yours. You can see addressed this year, he wouldn't have been there. So, we were gonna look at the law, no. Number two, the request from the mayor to help alleviate issues the municipality has been facing with landowners found in use by the community of the ducted was estimated on, due to March 25th. Will keep you appraised for, uh, when the government provides feedback. And you'll have more detailed feedback and, uh, hopefully some suggestions to go forward at Monday's, uh, meeting. After Yerkes regarding Ward Three request, answers from local government. I will require in writing an official request letter signed by the mayor, exactly what question the council, the mayor and council are looking to get answered from the government and the branch of Department of Local Government. Following done by the municipality, please provide this letter, uh, this written letter signed by the mayor and I will follow up. Nothing had been done in that investigation yet. I will point out since our meeting on Tuesday, I have received complaints from the community members on the vacancy of a council seat that missed the timeline for elections to be included in the next round of by-elections. I have also received complaints from the provincial government that the provincial government hadn't stepped in and set the municipal budget of Lake Glen Ridge for this coming fiscal year. The trust of mayor will address these two issues in an open, public and transparent manner that will satisfy community members that when fear of credit and public ridicule, they brought forward these complaints for the municipality directly. I would appreciate if you could share your plan with me on how you will address these two issues. On Thursday, I would like to say thank you for the invitation to be doing their special meeting, March 24th. And as I have said multiple times to all four municipalities and county in New York, I am available to help navigate and help grow our pillar of promise. I have had extremely productive strong citizens and collectively, reading the municipalities. My hope is to support the success of Lake Glen Ridge. Perhaps during our next meeting, we can discuss strategies, strategic plans, and what their funding streams that they may fit for your agenda. Now, I have basically drafted a letter, uh, to send back to Mr. Ames. I guess my question constantly is, how detailed do you want that ready to be?
I'd like to step in on this, uh, his concerns with the budget and everything. Uh, Mr. Ames seems to avoid the notion that maybe he was partly and maybe mostly responsible. Uh, the supervisor that was appointed at the time was a member of his, uh, particular executive council, uh, for the PC party.
And that is in my draft.
And he fails to recognize that and the fact that that said supervisor did not make sure of appointing a, uh, uh, make sure that a, uh, an accountant was appointed. So the failure and, and I guess it reflects back to his involvement, which I guess he's not accepting or admitting to. His involvement in the whole process through his government. Um, I think a lot of this lands in his lap and apparently he doesn't recognize that. I'm speaking publicly and saying this.
Jared? I agree on that, yeah. Okay, that, and that part was mentioned in my... Okay. I thought we might find out when they did the road count, because it's done in January or December, because it sure as hell wasn't done in July or August. And I did mention in my letter that for last year, at least for last year, he was... That's in the letter. That's why I asked how detailed you want me to get, I mean, we can get pretty explicit with a whole lot of stuff that we can make a lot of different, but this one's done. Those two things aren't even, you know, done yet. So, okay.
Um, I don't know where he's getting his comments about, uh, pretty public ridicule. Anybody at any time is allowed to pass touching. I don't think anybody would have told somebody that often.
Well, and I addressed that in my letter, is at least in my short period of time. I think I had come, was it? Yeah, I think he might have been when he was here that time. Um, he met a couple of occasions where people may not have got the answer really done. And I never once felt that since I've been around, that you're really ridicule, um, being put out. And I mentioned that in the letter.
And sometimes it depends on how you ask your question and where you ask your questions, as is probably this coming, saying, if you give me an explanation as to why the person felt that they had them.
So most of the things I have addressed, um, again, I can, I'll finish up the draft. I'll send it to Susie, maybe Susie can give it up to everybody for one final read-through. And then you got to be thrown in.
Another thing that I like, Mr. Ames, he said, uh, was carrying here once every, uh, three years, not really, really athletic as in M L A. If he's gonna represent this area, I'd like to see him, uh, you know, a couple times a year.
In person.
In person. Uh, on Zoom, this one was already, you know, uh, it's just, you know, weather situation.
And I'd like to know on that too, that we did send a letter to Minister Savoy on February 27th, addressing some of these same things with the... And Richard Ames was copied on it. And the que, those questions were asked then too in that letter. Nothing was ever answered, nothing was ever addressed by anyone. And the supervisor's bill, we had to deal with. Richard never once came to talk to us as a council, never responded to phone calls, emails to address the situation. And I think councillor Biden even went to his office in Napwic in person. So, a local government representative never came to speak to us through the whole mess that we were in when they were asked numerous times, himself included. And we had a meet...
What was his date, the first date, did she put it up there?
February 27th. And again, we had a meet the candidate night when the election was going on and, and he didn't even come and talk to people and address anybody's concerns there either. And we even at the first gave him the opportunity to give us some possible dates because he was, you know, the sitting M L A and, and whatever. And we never received anything, so I think this council has tried to have communication and it never was that.
He's responsible, simply I can't answer Peter.
So, here's a question, uh, we, we need to, Mr. Ames, wanted us to read his letter publicly. Uh, do we post our response on a webpage?
Put his, uh, we definitely put the, uh...
Yeah, okay.
The response to it. That's a fair...
Okay, Jared? I would suggest that, that Mr. Ames has been politician all night. He should know how they're politically come with the job.
Okay, you can grab me so that I'm...
Jared?
Wow. Two volumes.
Yeah, a little bit.
Agreed.
As I said, I'll kind of drag and attract on the draft, I want to get that up to you guys, or get the two, do you know, like, top letter, and then I'll let you go. Okay, no mayors report tonight, question regarding council members' reports, anything from council members?
I just sort of have one thing I didn't want to bring up now, and I got an email with regards, uh, to some floats from the DAPIC for the wars in the park. And they're just needing some items, so I'm just gonna give that to Susie and she can maybe call me and blah, blah, blah.
So, is no curse over it again?
I guess my only question is, is it all, it's got, but through the way that everybody wants it?
From the DAPIC office?
That's the note you had, you have now?
I said, no, yes. When, just place the deadline on it?
Is it the 18th? Seventeenth, seventeenth, and then, and then that goes into the holiday weekend.
Okay, from your guys' report, Kristen Patty, can you wait until we get to the overall fire chief position filled before we go back after the Canterbury Fire Hall, what was going to do with that? He evolves, I would think he should be, yeah. Cause that's, uh, we, we need to, uh, I think Morgan Randy said this one's just not fit, the carpenter range is a start building, this one.
No, it's not.
We'll probably have to have some...
We had to name the structure.
But just speaking as here now, um, I realize that they feel they need the room, right? But they have not once seen what they could fit in that building that they have now.
Which is why if we get the overall fire chief, I mean, and I know, I, I think you guys, were you looking at one or two days, two days probably?
They were looking at, they wanted two bags.
When we started the meeting.
That's what I heard, three and one.
I got about why the fire trucks are in the old buildings was because they could fit two in, but they weren't quite sure about the third one, but they never tried, but... I mean, we're paying for two furnaces over there and it spans the nut keys. And all I said was, well, can we see a little bit? So we just know where to start from.
So that's something we need to put on, so that overall fire chief, like, I'm saying, it's really to get that one done and if that's, if we get, they need to know, and that's the biggest one going, I think, this summer, to get that done. And we get five hours and four hours to wait.
I mean, we also have three other fire departments that are strapped for room.
Yep.
Personal, online, I mean, I don't want to sound negative towards anything, because I think all fire departments should be, should have improvement under the mall. But should we not be looking at maybe call volume too?
I have a question, how do we...
I like seeing that look there.
I have ours.
Yeah, I have a question about...
I have it.
The money that's there, that's Canterbury's. I, I'm a little fuzzy on how, like, they can spend their own money, except it's not they anymore, it's us. The designated for that project in particular, or the bathroom project, or whatever. How do we decide that? Like, how does that get sorted out?
Well, that's why I keep pushing for the fire department thing. And then the other thing is, we're gonna have to make some kind of decision on what to do with the restrooms downtown, whether we, downtown, down...
Okay.
Whether we go with the porta potties again, we go to the expense of putting in a septic system, because Gary was, I mean, a fantastic idea, it's just probably about $200,000 more than, uh, thinking before.
Could we not ask for a consensus on what you want to do? Is that the productive fashion that we're going to take to here?
Some people I've taught them, I've taught them probably 40% of the community. They would like to have a, uh, year-round washroom in the sense that could be used for the skating rink. But they are more than willing to not have a 12-month. If they're not getting one they can use for nine months. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
But I think Patty also mentioned that we got the rink in here and we could somehow incorporate a year-round thing for them. So that's, those goes to the thing, definitely the other thing we need to do with at least the two parks and the ducted and in, uh, and here is, we need to do the pea gravel and take a look at the, uh, take a look at the, uh, I don't, we're not always...
My ground.
The, there, cause I don't know if, if, if some of it is rusted and needs to be replaced. Uh, is it used enough to replace? So those are questions that in the next month or two, we really need some answers, uh, to. Uh, when it comes to the pea gravel stuff, um, you guys from work, was that your committee?
I was gonna ask, is that, are you requesting that the, the transportation committee?
Well, what I'm gonna request is, is that in the next meeting or so, that...
That's recreation tourism.
I'm gonna request that Susie, regardless of which committee, that Susie give the information we need on the pea gravel stuff. Like, how far, how deep, what do we need to do with that stuff? Do we need, do we dig up the old, uh, you talked about, did we dig up the old, completely new win? Or do we just spread pea gravel?
You can clean up, you can pick up the old, clean it, run it through a screener, but, yeah, I wouldn't throw it away. Price, it's probably somewhere north of landed, it's probably gonna be somewhere north of $50 a ton right now.
Okay.
Uh, I don't think, I don't even pause, if you'd get it for that, pea gravel, it's a long time to make. Uh... There's other things that you're allowed to use, I think we went through this last summer a little bit, Susie. Uh, everything from wood chips to, I don't know, the only thing you can't throw in a kid's eyes is sand. You throw rocks, wood chips, rubber pieces, everything else, but not sand.
Down the thing, down the thing's on, maybe.
With ours.
They had ground up tires.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I mean.
And that's what's spread down around to schools down there and all their equipment and...
Alright, can you hear circulation there, Susie? Uh, let's say three different parts. Groundwork time, stuff, honestly, that, some of that stuff.
I don't think I have any concern with that, there's potential for any wire or anything.
I thought, yeah, supposedly, yeah.
You should be checking, see what the regulations are too with the provincial government.
Yeah.
Public safety or wherever it is, for the transit.
Sorry, federal standard.
Well, I personally got to pea gravel, and you know, that's, uh, pretty much, you know, the stuff. You need to get a whole lot.
Yeah, all the same, like, how far it has to be spread around the...
I think that part is...
I guess Derek's, you're in, can you take a look, uh, in, in, in the wheelchair to see if any of that stuff's, you need to repair, is it safe?
There's only one key sentence, or somebody's brass, it's all new.
Well, you do have to ask them.
Yeah.
It's not...
All my, Derek's there, so it's just, over there, a lot.
There's kids in our stockings, right? Chris?
That's what you...
Uh, once it dries up a little bit, you're gonna see on a regular basis in the DAPIC park, anywhere from 20 to 30 people there, every night, and have as much as 50 on each day of the weekend.
Kids inside.
Kids and adults.
Well, that's, and that's what we want, right?
Yep.
Exactly.
Your turn.
Uh, no, the park fix is on Saturday, so we, we have time to pick down the park.
You may not, what if you can, and... You may not, what if you can, the money, uh, should we skip some basic implications, maybe even enough that we could, uh, give it a tender, if possible, just so that we can. And that stuff will start to compress and run, right? These murder kids, that sort of things?
Well, we get them all, it all works.
Yeah, well, we get the tenders, yeah, soon, still in our, it's good, I don't, you know, the condition that is.
Some, some of this stuff, well, costs for, um, RBC money as well, so you don't have to just use all municipal, if you have a plan.
Especially curations.
Yeah. Maybe forty two cents.
If we can do basis for anything, we have ten, many, many, we can get you up for a million, so, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, another dollar, yeah, for a.
Well, before, before, before you do that, well, we get an idea of what we want, what we got for ground and everything down there. And we can get an idea of what we should have, based on, uh, you know, communication with the recalc and everything, they're if they're talking about incorporating the rink in the south too, because I know you got these ground over there, it's got a well on it, so we got a well, got water. Uh, so, we're.
No, I said.
No. Let's say twenty five thousand, I'm just using the, the whole figures, and then you're gonna put, uh, forty thousand in the buildings, if you're looking at, you know, somewhere probably that doesn't get, all in all, down, probably anywhere from eighty to a hundred, just, and that's, those are just figures at this point. But if you live with a, a building similar to, uh, I don't know what the rink requires or what they want, but even if it's something that, you know, it's open in the summer, you can have roll down like Gary spoke, and, and they're, uh,
Yeah.
They have a good idea. Uh, that we just have the two washrooms that are needed, and then the rest, that's sort of a, you know, the more open it is, uh, historically, less out there are to, 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 pardon.
So, are we, when can we do that, when can we get that?
Yeah, if you find out, the recalc wants stuff, well, who'll begin to work with them?
We can do the ground. I guess we have that.
It's, I haven't had a lot of friends actually, it's a huge piece.
Well, uh, yeah. I did locate, I see, that's a, that's a, not news. Now. So, I guess, by our, by management, you actually know, for the, yeah, the next, it's true, yeah. But, yeah, 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 we still agree, James, you never cast it off, you must keep them.
It's everything that post office, so.
Well, seven, uh, here, each of you go on the miss.
Yeah, it's all of the ceiling thing is not supposed to be, it's all.
As long as you stay fired up, you have to be seventy five feet away from their well.
Yep.
So, you got the ground, most of them.
Do you think it goes as long?
So, you think the Monday, Gary, you can have a terminal of it? I would think so, I would hope so, I'm sure, I'll get the, uh.
Here's slide two ninety seven.
Is there a barbecue site down there, like, I just draw, go on, first, because of the belly. Kind of thing, like, if you're gonna use some construction, you want to do that as well.
We.
You want people to use your park, right, if you have no bathroom, and there's no place to have a picnic, and there's no, this and that.
Well, uh, any, like, in Medantic, um, there are no barbecue set there. And anytime you get down, there's a barbecue going, cause they, they bring your own barbecue, so they're gonna be doing a barbecue there for the day, stuff. Um, I've, there's none in Woodstock that have them either.
I mean, there's even a big pavilion in Woodstock, we're talking, I don't, there's nothing like that down here now, so.
There's a pavilion in the park, there's electricity in that, oh, God.
We just don't want to promote having barbecues in under a roof or anything of that nature. One thing to have it under little thickness table, chopper.
I was thinking, shade, I mean, right, right, you just can sit in some.
Yeah, no, no, I get, yeah, the ones down the park are just the ones all the picture tables.
Okay, so Gary may have some information on that, and we can get a proposal out and discuss if it's, uh, is skeptical, what's skeptical, or what's definitely against. Uh, I'm sure she was, like, okay, resolution in council of the capital borrowing board.
I had something just before you went there. Um, in the kitchen in the, in the, the Medantic Center, uh, two of the valves that run the, uh, the large, uh, flat burner. It's a grill top, it has three individual burners on it, two of them have malfunctioned. So, the grill is down, I do have prices for new, new valves. They're, they're quite expensive because they have to be for real bank, on natural gas or so being. So, my question is, uh, who do we go to, what do we do? Do I just get the information to Susie and, uh, she can get the phone call into them with a BO, and have them sent a, have them sent ASAP?
What's the company, Chris?
Uh, uh. Uh, let me try to get all this up for you. They're out of Ontario, it's the only place that we can find to get them, uh. I have a gentleman in Medantic, um, that has done some of the handiwork there and stuff for us, and that's what he used to do for a living. And he's researched it quite a bit.
There's a question.
He's gas certified.
He's gas, yeah.
I heard another question.
That's, that's.
That's.
Point here.
He's gas certified, that's what he did for a living out of Ontario. Uh, I can't make this out real good, I took a snapshot of it, but no, it's coming up real good, so, I will get that information and I will get it off to Susie ASAP.
Uh, it just, it's, it's not on here, Susie, but, uh, it's in the yard in the Medantic Hall, the engineer was in, did he say something?
Uh, there's nothing structural, uh, the, as far as structure goes, but it needs to be, um, the membrane put on the floor and to do that yearly, but he said to wait until it warms up, cause it should be warm, you can take everything out, do it all at once. Um, the only other thing suggested was, it's got a drop ceiling downstairs, and the old tiles are inside, so, he said they might have got saturated to heat from mold from growing, before you close it up, they might want to pull that out, but it's, as far as, uh, structure goes, it's fine.
Hmm, that's interesting. All right, resolution in council for the capital borrowing board, yeah. Do you need to correct me if I'm wrong, um, I know Gary had a question about the fire truck, and I was talking with Ross here, and, um, at some point in time, I think Ross had a question on the fire truck, so I replied to Gary's. Uh, when it comes to, why is the depth need to find something?
Okay, the, I'll start off with the explanation that, uh, um, the province has never adapted, or adopted, sorry, not adaptive, adopted, uh, NFPA standards. But, here's the, and here's the critical, but, uh, work safety Brunswick has, I don't know why, why the split between the province and works, but, the critical point here is, is work safety has. So, basically, uh, and this came up last year with, with, uh, personal gear, turnip gear. Uh, if we know that something's broke and we don't fix it, then it becomes a liability to us, and that's exactly what Workplace Safety, uh, said in an email, their order, said in an email. If you know something's wrong, you know, fix it. That being said, NFPA standards state that the primary truck has a twenty-year lifespan. Uh, you can recertify it, which they have done, two years in a row now, and it's passed. That's the pumping here, that's the only thing that NFPA asks for, really, is about that, and that they can build instructions out. Uh, as far as highway use, uh, so, it has passed the last two years, whether it passes this year or not, uh, whose fortune teller, Eric?
Okay, this comes into a question, um, uh, Gary asked, as at the start of the meeting, or before the meeting started. And do we need to put these things out to tender?
Here's, here's the second issue there, uh, technically, it should be, uh, and it could be. But if you don't get your borrowing in front of it, uh, then you can't put it in a tender.
Okay, so regardless of if the buyer thought, or if we put it out to tender, we've got to get the application into the world?
Yes.
Okay.
Because that lasts, that's good for two years, right now, uh, our local builder of fire apparatuses is got a minimum three-year waitlist. So, that means if we know that another fire department, which we will have, really, you know, coming on quickly, because we've got four units that we've got to combine here, try to mesh in. Um, if somebody else comes up next year that needs one, um, we're still four years out, so we've got to figure that if they're twenty years old next year, they've got a three-year wait behind that before we can have to get the place, and we gotta hope that, you know, we get the certification on the pumps and stuff, and the testing passes year by year.
So, the one thing that could get us in, uh, trouble, so to speak, is the front, we, we, we know, we know, we know that one?
You're so, you're supposed to, that's, um, anything over a hundred and thirty one thousand dollars. So, and that has to be on the, in the L N.
So, they.
What, what this, what this resolution tonight is, it's not even the borrowing money, it's, it's requesting authorization to ask if we can borrow money, the minister will sign off, so, the deadline to get this request in is Wednesday. Um, the next meeting, um, the, or hearing is held on May twelfth, I believe. No.
No.
No. Uh, then the minister will decide, yeah, you're financially stable, to apply to the capital borrowing board, then you make your application and secure your financing in-house, like, and then, once that's secure, then you take it and get a diventer. So, you get your long-term borrowing, and then, before that's approved, you have, you put your tender out, you can't get your tender out.
That's all they'll guarantee you money for, isn't it? And then you have to do it all again, you know? And you're not committed to taking it. This is the nod, this is just the, the primary steps, correct?
If we, if we make it through this round, the next step is they're gonna ask for a five-year capital, um, budget and a five-year capital.
That's what, maybe what, what's your name, not, off the, off the.
Which is your.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, all right, just, okay, go ahead, I just wanted to say, uh, I was talking to ordinary, uh, metal pad. And, uh, didn't he tell, uh, uh, we now that we were looking at? I just, I said, I have an office from you, or who, if we're looking at a truck. And, uh, so we ended up talking, and I said, if we order one, stack one out, come here tomorrow and stack one out, when could we take the lumber? And he said, I would like to promise you within twelve months that I would guarantee one in fourteen months.
Guaranteed?
Guaranteed.
Okay, so that's changed a little bit.
Yeah. And I said, I saw his message, he said, we are now turning out, uh, he said, we've, we've we've gone, I believe he said, an extra, a lot. The next, we come down a lot, uh, and we're gonna be coming down another month, he said, cause we're, we're, we're getting it together, and, uh, anyway, so I asked him, I said, what? Me being me, uh, asked him what, uh, he would recommend for a rural area fire truck. And he said, tandem plus the item. I said, how much, how many do you sell? He said, twenty percent, eighty percent single wax.
Yeah.
But he said, safety wise, no, no question, you go with that.
The biggest thing with the tandem, and we've talked about it, size and license cap.
Yeah.
See, once you go with the, with the tandem, uh,
Three A, or.
It's, you have to have at least a three cap. Uh,
And air.
And air. Uh, right now, uh, most people only require air to be able to drive a class five license, single wax.
Yeah.
And if we were in a, uh, more densely populated area, uh, you wouldn't necessarily be that much of a problem, depending on your, on your volunteers, how many of them may have a, okay, class or a class one license.
Yeah.
But right now, it's, it's not.
Don't think it's feasible?
Don't think it's feasible to do it, because, uh, there's only one or two drivers in each community of that, I don't even, doesn't make any, that many, class one or, class five drivers.
Three.
You have three. You got class three?
Yeah.
You gotta have that, so.
Anyway, before we actually sign for a fire truck, we've got a couple, I said, I mean, I mean.
Uh, these, if you found fourteen months now, or whatever, whatever, because last year, they're going through years.
Yeah, I talked to somebody in January.
Yeah.
And, and, and over three years, I've sixteen, seventeen trucks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If he wants to put that in leather, on the tender.
I asked him if I could afford to, I said, I, I won't you with our, our council, maybe you may, so, no match, that's all right.
Before we go to borrowing, something like that, it seems to me that we should have all this background, get together, like, what do they have, the trucks, what, like, an overall, like, that part of the decision-making process, right, so.
Just, listen, just to see if.
Right, but I mean, when are we gonna get this information, like, is this, you're all working?
We, we can have that, you get to, if we get this chief through ASAP here, that's gonna be part of the, bringing all this information together and, and be responsible to have this information on, and, and not just for borrowing for this truck, but all this information will be available, call volume, uh, as you had mentioned, different things, that's part of the program that we want to bring together with all of this, so we know the, not for once, but we know the needs of each department.
But my bigger overall question is, how are you gonna handle that as opposed to, like, if that's buying this, and Canterbury's buying this, and?
No, no, Lakeland Bridges will be buying.
Buying and.
And it's going in this station. See, right now, there, it would be foolish for us to get rid of the truck that they currently have.
Mm-hmm.
Because although it's no longer certified for a frontline truck, which is your, uh, frontline truck is truck that goes out first, it has to have a certain size bomb, it has to have so many T D O's on it. Uh, there's a lot of specifications that must have, it must have two ladders, one roof ladder, uh, that's truck extension. Uh, these are musts, it, it can't go without. But your, your secondary truck, the rules don't, the same rules don't apply, they're nowhere near stringent, they're stringent, but.
So, are you talking the difference between a pumper and?
Correct.
And, uh, what's the other one?
Tanker.
Tanker.
Tanker. But you can have a tanker pumper, uh, which most of us have and have had for years. Uh, but in this case, you can keep the same truck on the intended, because it's nowhere, some of them, like the old one in the dock there.
Little church with the hand cranks.
Pretty much.
Well, Phil, my one last point about this is, see that Lakeland Bridge is just communicating with work safety present, and I really feel like you should be able to certify these trucks, they get nowhere near the miles on them, that anything else.
On the truck.
Or, or whatever, but, like, to put some pressure on them and say, like, we can't afford two quarters of a million dollars for trucks and stuff like that, and once, when you've got something that will actually work. So, you know, at least put it on record and send them, uh, uh, could they please reevaluate these standards based on the amount of use that the stuff is getting? And the fact that it could be recertified.
These standards are North American wide.
I know, but it doesn't make any sense for.
You don't think that, that Lakeland Bridge is, though, in all reality, I, I appreciate what you're saying, but Lakeland Bridge is not gonna have an impact on the NFPA, on NFPA.
It's, that's work safety present.
Well, that gets into something that I'm not.
Pretty good, let's, just to see if we can actually.
Yeah. Get started on this?
Resolution in the council that the local government of Lakeland Bridge is submit to municipal capital borrowing board an application for authorization to borrow for a capital expense, a capital expense for the following term and amount. This amount was based on the amount of the truck we were talking about, uh, we're not tied into that, so. This amount was based on the amount in the truck we were talking about, uh, we're not tied into that, so. Eight hundred and thirty three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, pound for ten years. I certify that the above is a true and exact copy of a letter that can pass by the council over local heading. Lakeland Ridge is coming second year, April twenty twenty five. Well, I guess if we were approved for eight hundred thirty three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, it would probably be a good provider such other town.
I think we should change that to, to probably, um, about eight fifty or eight seventy five. Uh, not saying, but if we go to tender and someone else comes in and they have something that's. Felt that it's better, but within twenty five or thirty thousand dollars, I don't think we. You wanna be strapped by not bidding or not asking for quite enough.
We can do that in terms of.
Well, I think if I just base this off the seven twenty five from the.
So you guys wanna bump that up to eight fifty?
I think, but that's my.
You can mark it, I thought, or the seven six. That would.
Again, if the commitment isn't there, it's back, that's, that's our ask.
We don't have to spend, we're just asking, so.
Yes.
Okay.
But, if, if I'm gonna sit here and tell you that, it won't be spent. Uh.
So when it is spent, law of our fire service right now is back to the ward, so like.
That's very.
You know, we've been behind the each department, kind of boards or whatever, but this would be general.
We're trying to operate and move the trucks around, that's all, technically.
So we're gonna have to get our list of assets done, throughout what we actually have in the fire service. And see where it's gonna be used best and most efficiently and whatever.
Yeah, I think that would all be part of the personnel, against under the chiefs.
There's some plans, if the Medupic's this structural, plans of where stuff would be moved, you could be given better utilized.
Because we don't wanna get rid of anything, because we're not in a position, a financial position to be able to uh, both buy a brand and ladder.
And that's why I'm just clarifying that this isn't all on the residents of Ward Two to pay this amount of money, this is only municipality.
Yes.
That's what I'm understanding.
All right, so can somebody make the uh, motion, um, gonna change its weight? Will you accept that resolution?
I'll make the motion to accept the resolution, so the.
Second here, I'll second, depending if it's afforded.
We don't have a choice.
Question? All in paper? Sad part of Gary is this is the one that will be true of three over the next few years of learning, that's the. That, that's the, that's the bad.
This is, this is one of those situations where you really use term of necessity.
Oh, thank you, we're gonna be paying a hundred dollars a year for this, it's been five years, we're gonna be paying.
Everybody paying us now?
I know. Guys, we would have no regrets. Okay, upcoming activities and events, uh, when we, we concerned those are the same.
Yeah, I have a, thank you, Susan. The other one's there, I'm just calling you.
All right, we are up to the fun session, ladies. Give us a boom again.
Give it up.
This is gonna be a long.
Two, three.
Five minutes, two minute break.
Chris, you don't need a singer.
That's for stairs.
After.
Randy.
Thank you.
Two.
Yes, I'm bars.
Yeah, yeah.
It's okay if I.